Minutes, by the way. Good heavens. No, that was September 8th. Now, approval of the August 17th meeting. Did you all have a chance to read those?
Yes.
Would I motion to approve?
I some of.
And a second?
Second, Edna.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Correspondence and announcements, once that referral that I just mentioned for Susan Mitchell, as you know, we also have a petition that we will be sending to the town board requesting them to add four definitions within the hospitality section of our zoning law defining terms bedroom, guest room, lodging unit, and suite. We received today an email from Elizabeth that she is going to take the section on membership club and send it to the zoning review committee. They do not want us to take it up. Mr. Raplansky has recommended that they do that. So when we get to the petition, I will ask for a motion to approve and a second, and then I will ask for an amendment to delete the section on membership club. Hopefully, that will pass, and once that does, we will then vote on the petition. But as it stands now, the town board has decided that will be sent down to the zoning review committee and will not be something we need to address. Okay. That's all I've got. I don't know if anyone.
Jim, did you find Melody?
I sent her the login information, but she's not here yet. She's still trying to get in.
Did we approve the meeting notes?
Good. No, we didn't. Thank you, Edna. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I will move to do that.
I'm sorry?
I move to do that.
Thank you, Edna. Second?
Second, Kathy.
Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Well, why don't we move right along? Oh, there's Melody. There's Mel. Hello, Melody.
Woo! That was tough.
We did a few business things, approved minutes and accepted the meeting notes, and explained about the petition situation in Elizabeth's email to us. So we'll move right on to the Rhine Cliff Volunteer Fire Department at 17 Chatel Avenue. They're wishing to put a picnic shelter up on the site up above the fireman's field where they have the chili festival and things like that. Is someone here representing them?
Yeah, I'm on the phone, Joe Bear.
Excellent. Joe, if you could just give us just a little, a quick little description of what it is that you all want to do up there and how you propose to use this?
It's, uh, it's a, the fire company hopes to build it, or plans to build it ourselves through fundraising to gather the materials. It's a 20 by 40 picnic shelter. It's basically just an overhead roof. One end of the building is, of the roof is enclosed, has a roll-up window so we could store stuff in there, and like our Chili Fest, we could serve food on the counter. And then another part of the end that is enclosed has a garage, a small garage door on the back that we can store our lawnmower up there so that we don't have to pull out the fire truck and drive the lawnmower up to the field every time we need to mow the field. It's 20 by 40. I believe you all got a picture of it. Bob Wills designed it. I think it's very attractive. It's very simple. There's no electric. There's no water. There's no gas. There's nothing other than shelter from rain and sun and some storage. And it's got, it's on a cement pad with a walkway that goes to a cement pad where a handicap washroom can be placed when we have events. That's always the time it would be there if we had events. And it's for the community. It's for community use, not just for the fire company. So, so that's our hope and plan at this moment.
Okay. Very good. Oh, hello. Elise and I did the site visit. Elise, would you like to open the report on the site visit?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was very straightforward. I mean, there wasn't, I didn't see any sort of discrepancies on how it would negatively impact it. In fact, it seems very positive for, for the community of Rhine Cliff and Rhinebeck for that matter. So I thought it was, I thought it was straightforward and nice.
I, I agree. I saw no issues with it. It's a beautiful spot. I think it's, having this there will probably encourage more people to use that site up there for community events and things of that sort. I know we had some questions about where the porta potty is going to go, but from a servicing standpoint, that's kind of where it has to go so they can get in and get out with it. And secondly, as Joe said, this is not going to be up there permanently. It's strictly up there for events. It will be brought in for an event and then removed at the conclusion of the event. If there seems to be some issues with it, they've offered to say they can put up a trellis, something like that against it so you don't have to see it. But it's not a permanent fixture. It would just be a temporary, depending on the event, if it was required. Do any questions or comments from members of the planning board?
I just have a question. Joe, can private individuals reserve it or use it for a picnic or a family party?
Yeah, that's, that's our, our hope is that they will. I assume that we will, in the same way, while the firehouse is reserved for fire members to use, you know, that's one of the few perks being a fire company member gets you, is that you can use the firehouse. This would be for the community and we would, you know, we would put a notice up there that they have to call and reserve it so that it's not double booked. We don't have multiple events trying to go on at the same time. But yes, it, it's for the community as well as for the fire company. The fire company will use it for the two or three events we do up there each year. And, and then the rest of the year will be for whoever needs to use it, wants to use it. And they will have to reserve it and probably just sign off that they'll, you know, be no loud music or alcohol or anything like that.
And is there a fee attached to it or donation if you're a private individual?
The fire company will always accept donations, but no, we're not, we don't charge a fee for when somebody from the fire company uses the firehouse. I, we don't plan on charging any fees unless we find that they leave it trashed. I mean, if that becomes a consistent thing, we might have to start charging for somebody to go clean the place up. But hopefully, people will respect it, carry in and carry out. You know, that'll be on the form that they'll sign, that they're responsible to clean it up. And no, we're not planning on charging any use fee for it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, I have a question. Is there a limit on the number of people who may?
You know, it has, it's all open on the sides. So I imagine, I can't see why there would be a limit. I don't, you know, I mean, the biggest event I think we get up there is, is the Chili Fest. And we get, I don't know, maybe 60 to 80 people at one point during the day. They're not there the whole day. You know, they kind of come and go. But again, it's, I would think that there would be some picnic table-like structures underneath the overhead so that people could sit and eat. And then there's the field. The whole point of it is to be in the field and, and, you know, play badminton or throw a football around or whatever you're gonna do.
I have a, sorry, go ahead.
People who rent it are responsible for their own porta potty, is that correct?
Correct. We're not gonna supply, we supply the porta potty, obviously, when we have an event up there. But yeah, if somebody rents it, if somebody wants to use it, they're gonna be responsible for providing the porta potty.
Will there be any, or is there a garbage pickup there? Is there a garbage bin that people would be able to use?
There's, uh, there's no, not, no, nothing there that the, that the, that the garbage truck comes and picks up. But I assume that, like I said, that people will take their garbage with them when they go. And if not, it'll go into the fire company garbage bin, which gets picked up once a week like all the houses here in Rhine Cliff.
One more quick question is, how are people gonna know how to reserve it? Will there be like some sort of language hanging up inside the pavilion?
Yeah. I believe we'll, we'll end up putting up some sort of a plaque as well as, you know, we will probably be announcing it with a Morton Library Blast and the Rhine Cliff Tatler, and as well as something posted in, which will be the rules of the shelter as well as how to get ahold of whoever's gonna be in charge of making sure that there's only one event booked at a time.
Great. I was thinking what you might want to do is just set up a sort of a policy statement, explain to people the rules to use it, to provide their own, for example, garbage pickup and take it out with them and just things like that so they know sort of what the ground rules are to use it properly so it doesn't get abused.
Yeah, that, that will be all included in the form that they'll have to sign when they reserve it. And, and then there'll also be something posted there as well.
Sounds good.
Can I, can I assume, Joe, that among all the members of the fire department, you'll all be taking on responsibility for sort of self-policing the use of the building?
It's hard to say that we all will.
Okay, all right. I misspoke.
That's okay. I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's two, two sides to the fire company. There's, there's the first responders who are the guys who get up in the middle of the night and get on the truck and go out to, or the ambulance to go out and take care of what has to be done. And then there's another group which tries to do the administrative end of it so that those guys don't have to worry about it. I'm in, I'm in that class of people at the fire company. I've been a fire member for probably going on 16 years now. At one time, I was an ambulance driver. I don't drive the ambulance anymore. But I'm the treasurer and I take care of administrative stuff for the firehouse and for the company so that the, the company functions without the, the guys who are getting up in the middle of the night having to worry about it.
Yeah, no, I, I think the system sounds great. I just, you know, it's such an attractive area and I can see people just hanging out and, you know, sort of inspired to have a party without making a reservation. So I, I'm just thinking, you know, you're gonna have to think that through and be prepared to, you know, if you need to move people along if, you know, the activity hasn't been approved by you or something along those lines.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Was there anyone here from the CAV who wished to speak? Okay.
We did have a.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We did have a fellow come from the CAV. I forget his name at the moment, but he came up and took a look at it.
Okay. Very good. Then we probably have a written report from them, I would assume. Jim, anything you wish to add?
Me?
No, my, my one outstanding question about the porta potty usage has been answered, so I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a resolution. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application by the Rhine Cliff Fire Department for Site Plan Review and Special Use Permit, you due respectively for construction of a picnic shelter on Valley Way Road within the RCH, Rhine Cliff Hamlet, RCO, Rhine Cliff Overlay Zoning Districts.
Michael.
We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based upon review of the submitted information, including reports from planning board members, CAV, WAC members on their site visit to project property, we find that proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit, we find proposed work and intended use to be consistent with general standards of special use permits, and we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, we find proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code chapter 125, and we approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Bob Wills Architects dated February 24th, 2020. And we authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution, submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code chapter 125, payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursal amounts due to the town of Rhine Beck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I move so.
Kathy?
Yes.
Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna.
You need to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
You need to close the public hearing.
You're right. Good. Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you, Gretchen.
So moved, Melody.
And second? Thank you, Edna. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In terms of the resolution now, could I hear a motion to approve?
I some of.
Kathy, second?
Second, Melody.
Melody. This time I'll poll the board. Edna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melody?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Elise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So you're all set. Once you get the final plans for us to stamp and sign, you'll be in business to get a building permit to put the pavilion up.
Excellent, excellent. So I, I think they were already submitted with the original, with the original drawings, the, the final plans for it. But I will double check and make sure.
Okay, very good. And as soon as we get them, I'll see that they're stamped and signed.
I'll send an approval resolution first, though.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Gretchen. All right then. Moving on to.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck, Joe.
Take care.
Appreciate it. Have a good night now.
Take care.
You too.
Our next public hearing is Pink Rose Properties LLC, 40 Morton Road, addition and main entrance canopy, site plan and special use permit. We have a representative for Pink Rose.
Yes, you do. Mark Graminsky is here.
That voice sounds familiar.
Okay, this is start my video. Here we go. Good evening. So I'm here representing Pink Rose Properties LLC. It's a property located on the, excuse me, west side of Morton Road. It's a little more than 16 acres in size. And this particular property has been, has had a previous application with this board for some site improvements that were mainly located on the west side of the building that were previously approved. And the current, in this site plan application that is currently being reviewed, shows those, you know, previously approved improvements to, and they were basically landscaping and some landscaping improvements, you know, adding a few items, a slight expansion of the existing pond that's located on the property, and some other maintenance issues, you know, associated with the existing pool and patio that are located near the southwest of the corner of the property. You know, also some patio additions on the west side of the, of the building and also a reflecting pool, which is right on the west side of the patio. This particular application, Pink Rose LLC is requesting some minor changes made to the east side of the, the Ethan, east and north side of the building. On the east side, there is a, a proposed new canopy for the main entrance into the property. It's located near the, near the northeast of the corner of the, of the existing building where Jim's circling through there. And what it will do is it's a enclosed canopy, canopy for main entrance into the, into the structure. Due to the location of the, of the canopy, some, a slight modification needs to occur for the, for the existing driveway. That's also, it's, it's a little bit to the east and to the north of the, of the new canopy entrance. And so it'll just require some realignment, along realignment of the driveway and the curbing, along with, you know, realignment and relocating some existing propane tanks that are right, and Jim's circling that now. There's, it was, the current, that current entrance is, is currently stone lined and will remain stone curbing through there. That will be actually along the new alignment and, and realigned along the existing alignment also. So the curbing will be reset through there. In addition to this, to this proposal, there's also a, a proposal for extension to the north side of the building. And that, that extension is on the lower level, the first, first floor level. And it'll actually, it just is just a little bit short. That extension is just a little bit short of the existing deck and porch that extends out on the second floor of the structure. And it's just, it's, it's an extension for a library on the north end of the building. This extension just requires, the only change is a relocation of the existing septic tank. It'll be, it'll be located too close to the foundation, so it'll be moved to the north to meet the required Dutchess County Health Department codes. And it's just a simple realignment. The remainder of the existing septic field will remain unchanged. It's just a simply relocation of the tank. That is the, the summary of the proposed improvements for this particular application.
And who did the site visit for us?
Elise and Edna.
Ah, could you guys report on what you saw?
Elise there? I'm here. Do you wanna go first? You want me to go? Go ahead. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with the property. I actually sold it. I didn't work with these clients, but I represented the seller when they purchased it. And they've done quite a bit. It was really impressive to see all of the infrastructure going in and everything they're doing. It looks like they're doing a, you know, very well thought out job. And the project of extending that area seems pretty straightforward and very much in alignment with the, the upper floor, right? Because it's just being extended to the distance of the existing structure as it is. So it seemed pretty straightforward and minimally invasive, if you will.
I agree. And the canopy and the addition are in keeping with the current architecture and design of the house. The house and its landscape are completely screened from the road and from any neighbor. And from the river, there is a line of mature trees that very nicely screens the entire property from the river.
Any, any questions for, for Mark from other members of the planning board? Okay, I believe we did receive a report from the CAV, WAC citing no issues or problems with the project. Jim, did you have anything you wish to add?
Yeah, Mark, before we had mentioned, there's this one label on there. The label's existing curb. If we can just get that one fixed.
Yeah, I did. I recall as I was going through my presentation, Jim, I saw my mislabeling to that curb, so I will change that. I apologize. I forgot.
No, it's a totally minor thing. It's just to clarify for that, you know, the last mission there. That's it I had. Otherwise, everything looks fine to me.
Okay, I'll make that change before I re-submit.
Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak?
Not seeing anything in the chat box.
Okay. I hear a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Edna.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. And the town of Rhinebeck hereby acts as follows on the application by Pink Rose Properties LLC for Site Plan Review and Special Use Permit under chapter 125 for addition and main entrance canopy at 40 Morton Road. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker based upon the review of submitted information including reports from the planning board members, CAV, WAC members on their site visit. We find that proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in Town Code chapter 125 and grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code chapter 125, and we approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Mark Graminsky, P E, L S P C, dated July 13th, 2020. And we authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions and requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution, revision of the proposed stone curb label to clarify the location of the redesigned driveway, submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code chapter 125, payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to the town of Rhinebeck related to the review and processing of the applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. I will poll the board. Elise?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melody?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Edna?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So as soon as you get those to us, Mark, they'll get stamped and signed and you can get a building permit.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Nice to see you again.
Likewise. Good night, everyone.
Night, Mark.
Take care, Mark. Okay. Our next public hearing is Barry Entner, 41 Violet Hill Road, Site Plan Special Use Permit, Wetland Permit for Construction of Garage, Septic Fill Pad, and a bunch of other things that just went away. Accessory dwelling, pool and septic system. Thank you, Jim.
Jump the gun.
Okay.
Hi, Michael. It's Darren from the Art of Building. You're on behalf of the Entners. How are you?
Very good yourself?
I'm doing great. So Jim, if we can go back to the one you had a second ago, there's a, there's two sets that we sent in. Each have a little bit different information. So just for the sake of presentation, let's start with this sheet number C. And what I'd like to do is just walk through what's going on in the site today, what's proposed, but also just fill in some of the details that I think will help a lot in the board thinking about this proposed project. Just some infill from some of the conversations we've had to date. But very, very quickly, 41 Violet Hill Road, located just across from Burger Road, an 18 acre parcel located in the RC 5 zone. And if we look towards the right side of the exhibit here, there are two existing structures on the parcel. So you can see the, the large sort of rectangular shape is the, the parcel. And the driveway runs about a third of the way into it, kind of towards the left. That first building there on the left side is the existing four-bedroom residence, 3,348 square feet in size. And then if you progress down the driveway to the end, you get to what we're calling existing barn. That is a 1,550 square foot. We call it a barn. It's actually a glassblowing studio for the property owner. So he runs his business out of that, that building that exists today. So as far as existing structures, that's what we're dealing with at the present time. And then Jim, if we can go to the other set of exhibits, we'll come back to this one in a minute. But what we put together is just a couple of overlays on essentially the same plan. You just have to see that we adjusted it a little bit sideways so that things fit better on the screen. But towards the left of the screen there is Violet Hill Road, and then the same driveway running in past the main house, and then again, ending at the studio, which I just mentioned at the very end of the driveway there. And what this plan, what this exhibit is showing are basically two things. One are the wetland areas on the parcel, and there are associated 100-foot buffers, and two existing wood lines. So pretty interesting when you see this. If, there's a couple of other things pointed out on here as well, which probably weren't some, some. which probably weren't some, some mentioned since, since we have them labeled a number just so that if they're referred to later, I can, I can use these numbers to come back. But we've already talked about driveway, main house, and barn. And then if we follow the key at the top, number four, there are two number fours on this plan. And they are showing the two existing water wells, the drinking water wells that serve this parcel. They both feed into the main house at the present time. And then they feed out from there to some garden hydrants and also towards the studio in the rear. Number five, located just sort of to the bottom of the screen, below the main house, thank you, is the existing septic system and associated components, just so we have a sense of where that is. And then number six, just to the left of the septic field, are some existing utility components. A generator, the transformer for the utilities, two buried propane tanks, which serve the house and the generator. And then what's labeled as number seven, which runs sort of throughout the site with that little cross hatchy triangle area, are the wetland areas on the parcel. Okay, so that number seven, that line that Jim's following, is the actual line of the wetlands. And then if we go to number eight, we move 100 feet away from that. And that is the line of the wetland buffer on this parcel. So the town of Ryanbeck's wetland buffer. Of course, both the wetlands and the buffer run off the parcel, but we've already shown what's on this site. Number nine, significant in that these are some very, very mature sugar maple trees that line the driveway, you know, quite, quite large in size. They make quite a statement as you drive in and out of the driveway. And then number 10 are our wooded areas. And although they're not something necessarily that are areas restricted from development, we felt they were worth showing because they were something that we did our best to avoid as we proposed development on the site. One, because they're beautiful. Two, they are obviously wooded areas we want to maintain. But three, because they really provide a lot of privacy for this parcel. They do a great job of buffering the parcel for sound and also for sight. So if we take a look at what we've shown here in terms of shaded areas only, essentially what we've done is we've eliminated 14.07 acres of wetland and associated buffers. And then another 2.2 acres, 2.28 acres of wooded area from what we'll call developable. So just to follow the logic through, the remaining developable area, at least on this slide, is what is shown here in white in the center of the map. And then if we click on through to the next exhibit, which is CP2, this was something requested at the last meeting. This is actually our underground utility plan. Okay, so things shown on this plan, a lot of what was talked about in the prior slide still carries through the existing wells, the septic system, the transformer, the propane tanks. But what we've done is shown the underground routing of the utilities. And there's a legend at the top there where you can see the water lines are shown in blue. The gas lines are shown in yellow. The electric lines are shown in pink. Data and other communication cables are shown in that purple color. And then the sewer line, the septic line to the existing house and to the septic system for the existing house is shown there in green. And then what we've done is we've just shaded the immediate area above those utilities just to indicate, you know, sort of a no fly, a no dig, a no build zone, if you will. So I made the argument last meeting that the area behind the house to the left of the driveway wasn't necessarily a suitable site for development. And I think this exhibit does a very good job of showing, just with existing utilities, exist, utilities that exist on the site as of today, that, that is a pretty tough area of the site to develop. And I think we were very, very conservative in our shading here. We didn't take credit for the areas that are sort of landlocked or, or sort of cut off by utilities here, which would actually mean probably quite a bit more in undevelopable area, if you will. So when you add up all these numbers, we lose another essentially half acre, 0.45 acres of non-developable area. And then clicking through to the next slide, just continuing on this, this pulls it all together for us. Okay, so the past two exhibits combined into one. So you can see the underground utilities, the wooded areas, the wetlands. One thing that's not shown here are municipal constraints through setbacks. So I didn't show the front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks here, although a lot of them are already incorporated in what's shown. But essentially what we've done here is we've taken an 18.01 acre parcel. And we've reduced it down to 1.21 acres of developable area. So we've lost quite a bit of area on what seems like a very, very large parcel and immediately eliminated it from all consideration for development. And that's not even factoring in things like the slope along the sides of the driveway and such. So I felt it was important to bring this exhibit tonight because I feel like one of the things missing from my prior presentations was just the logic as to why we put things where we did on the site. It wasn't for reasons of just being stubborn or because we thought they looked good there. This was the starting point for everything. And I don't think I did a good job of communicating this prior. It may have come up during some of the site visits, but not necessarily at the public hearing. So then Jim, if we can go back to that prior set, there's one sheet in there that follows the cover sheet, which takes away all these colors, but then does a good job of showing what is actually being proposed for this site. And this proposal's unchanged since prior presentations, but it warrants going through just to point out the different things that we're proposing here. So for starters, we're proposing number three here. And it might be a little bit difficult to see. I wonder if we could just zoom in slightly. It seems a little blurry. Maybe just out just a tiny bit because we just missed the thing we're trying to show. There we go. Okay, so for orientation, there's the driveway again. There's the main house to the left of it or to the bottom of it underneath it. And as we continue in the driveway headed towards that studio in the rear, there is now a building shown on the left side or of the driveway or the bottom of the screen here, which is labeled number three. So that is the first of our proposed buildings. And that is a proposed three car garage. Okay, 1,100 square feet in size, one story, three car garage located here on the driveway where you'd expect a garage to be situated. The next building that's proposed is just across the driveway from it essentially. That is number four. And that is our detached accessory dwelling. So a one bedroom detached accessory dwelling, 606 habitable square feet of, of area there. It is on two stories, but the bulk of the space is on the lower level. The upper level is strictly a bedroom. Then if you move just a little bit further in the same direction, you get to number five, which is an 18 by 36 swimming pool. And that swimming pool has an associated bluestone patio. And then just to the left of it there, a pergola, which is just a wooden pergola, no real roof on it, lets some shade come through or some filtered light come through, but it doesn't actually keep you dry. It doesn't have a true roof on it. It's just more designed for, for shade and aesthetics. And then of course, there's a, there's a fence to go with the pool, which is shown on there. There's a little fence line shown. And basically, it's just a split rail fence with some four inch welded wire on the fence to meet the code for pool barrier. Even though the pool will have an auto cover, a fence is still required. And what that fence is, is doing is it's tucked into the wood line as much as possible so that it's concealed from view to the best of our ability. And then number six, just across the field from the pool. So if we move to the right of the pool, number six is something else underground, a proposed septic system with 100% replacement area. So that is our proposed septic, which is currently paused, but it's been submitted to the Duchess County Department of Health for review and approval. It is a one bedroom septic. And then the replacement area is a, is a one bedroom replacement. And it is a fill system as, as described on the, on the, on the agenda. So those are the, the things we're here tonight to talk about. We think that this, beyond the constraints that we, we're dealt here, we think this does a few things in terms of good planning, good layout. For one, we've pushed this development down to a grassy area of the site. So we've kept away from some of the wooded areas. We're proposing to develop a grassy area of the site today. We also have evidence of various greenhouses and barns and other structures, sheds and the like, originally being located in this field, this grassy area where today you see a pool, poolhouse and a septic, at least proposed. We did our best to tuck the detached accessory dwelling behind this row of sugar maple trees. So the effect is that you come upon it as you drive into the driveway. The main event still being the house, followed by, you know, continuation of this beautiful row of trees, which by the way, there are plans to add more sugar maples into this fall. We were going to do it this summer, but it was just too hot to plant tree trees of any significant size and guarantee that they would live. And we've also attempted to tuck the building into the hillside. The driveway actually sits about 10 feet higher than the portion of the field where the pool sits. So if you can imagine standing on the driveway, you'd be looking down upon the pool. It's about 10 feet below your feet standing on the driveway. So what we did was we tucked the proposed dwelling into the hillside so that you can see the finished floor on the second level is 268 feet. And the finished floor on the first level is 261 feet, which relates very nicely to the proposed elevation of the swimming pool at 260 feet above sea level. There was also an attempt to consolidate the service buildings together. So we essentially have three buildings through their architecture, which are designed to look and feel very much like they were service buildings for the main house. The main house taking the center stage, being the main event architecturally on the site, having the most space around it. And then these three buildings clustered together so that they appear to be secondary to the main house, both in, in form and in location on the site. They're also very similar to each other architecturally. They're designed more to feel like barns than they are to feel like another main house on the property. So this isn't a detached accessory dwelling that's designed to feel like a second house. This is one that's designed to feel like something converted into such a, such a use. And another point worth mentioning is the pool and the detached accessory dwelling are very intentionally located together. The idea here being that this detached dwelling serves not only for sleeping, but also as a poolhouse. So you get to use the amenity in the building via some beautiful French doors that open up onto the patio or the pool deck, as it's called. And that way you can use the kitchen, the bathroom, changing rooms when you're at the pool and you don't have to go back up to the main house, nor do you have to build those facilities separately. If you want things like that near the pool, including a kitchen, which is, you know, a nice amenity to have near your pool, whether it's just for the refrigerator or for cooking of some sort or entertaining down at that end of the site. And the most significant, since last time, there was a quite, a request or a reminder to me that wetland delineations need to be current. So they need to be within one year when coming to the planning board. And in fact, our prior delineation wasn't current. So we had the wetlands delineated on August 11th by Michael Nowicki. And this does reflect the new wetland boundary line. So therefore, the buffer has been modified accordingly so that we're in keeping with the new wetland line. And what we were able to do both through, for the first time ever in my entire career, a little luck that the wetland line was actually less restrictive than we originally thought using the DEC's maps. And through a little bit of juggling of some components, we were able to remove the pool, the poolhouse and all associated facilities completely from the wetland buffer. So there is no longer a wetland buffer impact from these proposed developments on the site. And the garage across the driveway is, is also not in the buffer. It wasn't prior and is no longer in the wetland buffer. And it is not in the wetland buffer today, I should say. So that means our only wetland buffer impact, not even wetland impact, but buffer impact is the septic field. And strictly just the toe slope of the septic field. So no actual septic components proposed in the wetland buffer, but strictly just the slope that grades down the fill pad per the DEC's requirements or the county's requirements away from the septic system. So just very quick, you know, septic system 101 is that the, the business part of the septic is located within the center of this fill pad, that sort of odd shaped object in the oval, if you will, the oval rectangle. And that, that business portion of the septic has 25 additional feet around it on all four sides where there is just high quality soil, according to the county board of health. So there is now actual septic component, not even within 25 feet of what we're showing as the septic fill pad edge. And then from there, there is essentially a, a clay, if you will, wall that keeps the septic components in, in their little space and grades down to return the site to its former topography or to tie into its existing topography. That then gets some topsoil on it and it gets seeded. So the area we're proposing disturbing in the wetland will in fact be the addition of some soil and then the addition of topsoil over it and some, some seed and hay. Also, worth pointing out is that not only will there be silt fence during construction, but this area we're talking about, this wetland buffer impact area we're talking about today is lawn. It's, it's mowed, it's maintained lawn. So this isn't, you know, what you might have in mind when you think wetland buffer with, you know, wetland type vegetation or woods or anything of the type. So we're essentially proposing putting grass in the grass wetland buffer. And, and not to say that's insignificant, but I just want to point out for the visual that, you know, this is a grassed area, this wetland buffer, and we're returning it to a vegetated state. And if anything, due to the addition of the septic field and the very pervious soils, you know, a lot more water can actually get into the field than could in the current.
Sorry. Sorry.
And let's just see if there's anything else. So that basically are our, our significant components. And just to point out that, that, um, that toe slope does encroach on that wetland buffer about 32 feet. That is what the proposed impact to the buffer is. And then when construction is done, you know, it just returns to, to grass, as I pointed out. But it is the only wetland buffer impact at this point. And then just to clarify a couple of other comments, because I think they're important to, to consideration of this application. There was a letter read into the record last week or, or last meeting that, you know, quoted the property owner as, as having said that the wetland, the water in the wetland to the left of our screen here, there's sort of two wetland areas on the site. There's one to the left and one to the right. I just spent a lot of time talking about the one to the right. But if we now focus our eyes on the left of the screen, there's a little arrow that calls out a wetland boundary and an elevation of 250 feet. So that is about the boundary where the water migrates to, in the wettest of springs, migrates over land according to the owner of the property. And he asked me to clarify that his comment wasn't, and, and what he had said to, to sort of define that is the water, he's only seen water come as far as the dumpster, which is that little series of two boxes there by the studio just to the left of the existing well. So what he was trying to explain is that he's seen water, a water line in the spring come about as far as the dumpster. But I think he was misunderstood in that there was maybe a thought that his comment meant the water rose to the elevation of the dumpster. In fact, that dumpster is at 260 feet elevation, whereas the wetlands at 250. So he asked me to clarify that he wasn't implying that the water level actually So he asked me to clarify that he wasn't implying that the water level actually rose 10 feet vertically, vertically to come up to the level of the dumpster. And then that sort of transitioned into a concern about whether or not the pool might potentially become flooded in the spring by wetland waters, waters coming from the wetland, introducing chlorine into the wetland. And again, just, I think the simple way to describe that or maybe debunk that is that the wetland is at 250 feet and the top of pool coping is proposed at 260 feet. So we're a solid 10 feet above the wetland elevation with the pool as proposed today. And for intents and purposes, the ground floor, the lower ground floor of our proposed detached accessory dwelling unit. So I just wanted to make some clarification about that, that we don't feel there's a concern of wetland flooding the pool and taking pool water back with it.
Okay, Darren, thank you. Questions from members of the planning board or comments?
I have one question, Darren. Did I hear you say, and I might have missed it, that in the lower area where the pool is, there are remnants of prior buildings?
There are, there's, I don't know that there's remnants today. What's down there right now, the only thing visible is a 770 square foot patch of asphalt, which is now, you know, a basketball court. It has a basketball hoop with it. But the owners have told us that when they bought the property, there was a ruin of a barn down there near where that basketball court is. In fact, that basketball court might be sitting on perhaps an old slab from that barn. And then we know just from, you know, from the excavator, who's done some work from, for us, who's done lots of work on this property over the years that, you know, there were a handful of greenhouses. And I think the historic commission had said the same thing scattered throughout the site. One of them appears to have been very close to the area where the proposed detached accessory dwelling is. And those had all been sort of smashed and ruined, you know, long ago.
If you go, if the project is approved, is there any way that as the work is progressing, you're able to document on a site plan what you find? So that there is some record of what might have been there in the past?
Certainly, I mean, if we were to find anything interesting or significant, we could certainly make note of it where it was found and, you know, talk to the historic commission about, you know, anything they might want to come out and see.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things where as you're doing the work, you know, certainly photo documentation and just, you know, placement on the map may be useful going forward. I mean, I know the buildings are gone, I'm not suggesting anything excessive. But it would be nice to be able to document anything that might have contributed to that farm landscape in the past.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. You know, hopefully there's something interesting there. So far, all we've really found are some, you know, lots of glass shards and things like that. But hopefully there's something more interesting than that lurking out there.
Well, they can be interesting too.
There's a reason it's called Violet Hill Road.
For sure.
That's right.
Other questions or comments? I think that the main question obviously that we had was the potential for wetland and buffer intrusion, which now that you've had it recently delineated, we seem to have, that seems to have disappeared, which I think is a very positive thing. And I think that was the main concern we had at the time.
Do we have the new mapping from Nowicki?
It's on this map, so it's surveyed, this line from Nowicki is surveyed and part of this submission.
And does it show off in some way on the submission or is there a formal way that?
I believe he gets a title block on the final plan, but I'm not the expert on that. Certainly could have him do it, I'm sure he wouldn't mind.
Yeah, he would definitely be the one to sign off on the delineation when it was done so that we know it was during the 12 months that it's supposed to be. So just to make sure we have a record of that on the final site plan that will be stamped and signed.
Certainly, and there is a block just at the bottom right hand corner of this near the C1. Page number there, which does explain that information. It just doesn't have his signature, which we could certainly have him put on.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Darren, this is Jim. One thing we've been asking for, and I didn't mention it last month, is just to add a note to the plan stating that the pool safety elements, which would be the fence, and I guess you're going to have an automatic cover on there, I think you heard your say earlier.
Yes.
Just add a note to say that the safety elements are code compliant with New York state law, that's all. Just to ensure that the plans are showing that they are compliant.
Do you have a note you like or we just write something on?
Something that just states it's code compliant, it's actually state what you're doing, that if it's a fence and an automatic cover, whatever, that they are compliant with New York state code for pools. That's just putting it up next to the pool.
Sure, and I know it's a CO checklist item too and a CC completion, certificate of completion item for the building department as well.
And any questions or comments?
I was just gonna say, the only other thing I did see is on the two different sheets, you kind of labeled things, you know, like a seven was one thing on this plan and a different on the other. It doesn't create confusion because there's a key on the plans, but it would be nice to see those kind of consistent. So the wetland buffer line is consistently a number seven or whatever it might be, flipping back and forth between the sheets.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'll slap the engineer on the wrist for that.
Not a huge deal, just a note for.
Absolutely, we'll do a better job on our homework.
Anything else? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Melody?
I motioned.
I seconded.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, public hearing is closed and I have a resolution. Town of Bryanbik Planning Board here we access files on the application by Barry Entner for site plan review, special use permit and wetland permit for construction of the garage, septic fill pad, detached accessory dwellings, swimming pool and septic system at 41 Violet Hill Road in the RC5 zoning district. We reaffirm the proposed action is type 2 under secret. Based upon the review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC and CAE members on their site visit to the property, find that proposal is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for wetlands permit, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the requirements for wetland permits set forth in town code chapter 120. And we grant the requested wetland permit conditional upon receipt of a special use permit and site plan approval from the planning board. With respect to the application of social use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for social use permits. And we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter 125. We approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by synergy design dated August 2020. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions requires within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Addition of a note to the plan stating that code compliant safety elements are provided for the pool, i.e. defense and consistency in labeling on the plans. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and numbers specified within town code chapter 125. Paying any outstanding fees and reimbursable amounts due to town of Bryanbik related to the review and processing of this application. And receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state or other agencies required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve, please? Okay, I think Melody moved and I think Kathy seconded.
Fine, yes.
Thank you. I will poll the board, Kathy?
Yes.
Melody?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Edna?
Yes.
Delise?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So upon receipt of the final site plan for me to stamp and sign, once it's stamped and signed, you are good to go and get your building permit. And also please feel free to tell Dave Pearson down at Department of Health that the site plan, special use permit and wetland permits have been approved by the planning board.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Take care.
All right, thanks everyone.
Okay, we have one more public hearing. And this one is Griffin Dunn, 16 Bolin Becker Road, site plan and special use permit convert part of an existing barn from storage to a two bedroom guest house.
Good evening, everyone, this is Michelle Harrington with Chestnut Street Design and Construction, speaking on behalf of Griffin Dunn. Just a brief summary, we're seeking approvals for a special use permit and site plan review for the conversion of a portion of the existing barn into a two bedroom accessory dwelling located on a 71 acre parcel at 16 Bolin Becker Road. We previously met with the historical and archaeological preservation committee on August 20th, which we've reviewed a number of items that we have since revised. We did receive their report on the 26th. Some of the more substantial revisions include revisions of the layout of the windows on the east and west facades. Jim, if you'd like to scroll down to the second page. So we've gone for the more traditional central window that kind of gives the illusion of a hay loft, which the committee recommended. And we have the two egress windows that flank either side of the hay loft window. These are for the two bedrooms on the second story. We also have changed the siding to a horizontal siding based on the committee's recommendations. We will be doing a roughson cedar siding that will vary in widths as it ascends to the peak. And we've also chosen to remove the existing fascia and boxed soffits to expose the rafter tails, also to bring back a more historical detail. So this page represents the newly proposed west facade. And down to the left hand corner is the existing facade. And the right hand corner is the existing interior structure. All of the window placements have been made to not disturb any of the existing historical structure inside. And Jim, if you want to scroll down to the next page, that shows the revision of the east facade as well. And the north and the south elevations have remained pretty much the same from our previous submission. The only changes there are the, this is, Jim, this page is the existing, if you want to scroll back to the first page, sorry. So that's the north and the south, which has remained the same. However, we did change the horizontal siding to align with the east and west facades. The final thing that we're taking the committee's recommendations on is the change out of the trim on all the casements to a more traditional style header piece and a sill, as opposed to the fully picture framed casements that you see now.
Okay, questions, comments? One of the comments, I guess, that I have simply is, this is basically maybe the first time we've had a chance to see this.
Yes, yes, and I think, yeah.
I mean, and I'm not saying that it's not a vast improvement or good and all, but I think one thing we need to do is just send this back to the HAPAC, HAPAC, for just a quick, you know, going over so that we could, that at our next meeting, hopefully, which would be the 21st of this month, we'd be in a position, I think, to wrap this up.
Okay, great.
Any comments?
Yeah, we tried to turn it around as quickly as possible, but unfortunately we didn't have enough time.
There was clearly a lot of work involved here and it's certainly appreciated that I think it's a far better, far better project than what was initially seen and certainly what exists on the site right now.
Yes.
Really need to send it back to that committee just so they can, first of all, see that there are suggestions and their advice was taken into account and in many cases followed so that, because they put a lot of time and work into this and they can see that, yeah, it really paid off. But that's sort of what I would like to see us do is continue the public hearing until September 21st, if that's agreeable to the rest of the planning board.
Think that's a good solution.
Okay.
Michael, this is Jim. I'm not on the planning board, but I agree, I think we should go that route. And I talked with Gretchen and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're looking at the 21st at 6:50.
We are indeed. Could I have a motion to continue this public hearing till September 21st at 6:50?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Edna.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay, I think then that's basically where we stand. I think this was the only sort of, I think, outstanding issue. And I think it's been addressed and it looks a whole lot better to me.
Yeah, we're really happy with being able to collaborate. We think the overall product has actually improved drastically, so it's been a great process.
Well, I think that's appreciated and I know the committee appreciates because I know they put a lot of work into this to really give you good information. And we will get this off to them tomorrow and ask, request them to, you know, as quickly as possible for the 21st to have their response back and any comments they might have.
Excellent, thank you, everyone.
You're very welcome.
Okay, have a good evening.
Okay, that was our last public hearing. We now have some new applications to be presented. John Kish, at 399 Ackert Hook Road, site plan, special use permit for a ground mounted solar system.
Hi, good evening. This is Leah Springsteen from Sun Common, presenting on 399 Ackert Hook Road. A 18.2 direct current KW solar array, 15.2 alternating current, consisting of 52, 350 watt solar panels. We've met all the property line setbacks and have proposed screening of a mix of Colorado blue spruce trees and forsythia to wrap around the northwest corner of the array and run into some pre-existing trees that will be removed. But we think that the array will be totally screened from view with the proposed screening, so that's all I have.
Okay, any questions from members of the planning board? I'm taking it that the hash marked areas are natural vegetation, but not wetlands.
Correct.
Okay.
If you go down to, let's see, the budding parcel map, yeah, that one, you'll see that the diagonal lines, those are the wetlands. And there's a setback, you see the closest setback to the wetlands is 746 feet from the southeastern corner of the array.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, I have a resolution. The town of Bryanbik Planning Board hereby access files on the application by John Kish for a site plan and special use permit under town code 125 for installation of a ground mounted solar array at 399 Ackert Hook Road in the RC5 rural countryside zoning district. We accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and public. And we are classifying the action as type 2 under secret. We're scheduling a public hearing for October 5th at 6:35. And direct the court to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof. And we're going to delegate planning board members who would like to go visit?
I'll go.
Who is, was that Edna?
Edna.
Who else would like to go to see this lovely site? Well, I guess I'll go. And we will conduct a field visit and report at the time of the meeting. We are going to refer to the conservation advisory board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors and the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, referring for application to them for development review. And we are authorizing without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both above cited field visit and referrals. referrals, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on October 5th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Kathy?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. So we will be getting in touch with you about setting up a site visit.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay. Our next application is Adam Suits, 41 Round Lake Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, Ground Mounted Solar.
Yep. Leah, still here from Sun Common. We've got a 19.6 KW direct current solar array, 15.2 KW alternating current, consisting of 56 through 50 watt solar panels broken into two arrays. We've met all the setback requirements and have proposed a screening of forsythia bushes to be planted to the east of the two arrays. Forsythia bushes will run along a topography line that is 10 feet higher from where the arrays are sited. So we are confident that we'll have total screening from the neighbors to the east. And that's all I got.
Any questions or comments from members of the planning board?
This is Jim, I'd just like to clarify my first comment in the memo about the aerial and personal access not matching. That's all been clarified. Everything is, is as it should be. There is a detached garage, pool and shed, which have been put in somewhat recently. I don't know if you know exactly when. We aren't showing on the aerial images, but everything looks to be, to be set the way that it's shown on the site plan.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a resolution. County Brown Lake Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Adam Suits for site plan and special use permit, due respectively for installation of a ground mounted solar array at 41 Round Lake Road in the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public, and we're classifying it as type two under seeker. We are scheduling a public hearing for October 5th at 6:40. And direct the court to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof. And okay, who's going on this site visit? I'll have to start assigning this.
I'll go, I'll go.
Okay, who said that we'd go? Delete?
Leah will go.
Okay. I'll go. I'll go.
Cheer up, Kathy.
Okay.
The enthusiasm. Okay, they're going to go and do a site visit and report back on what they see. And we're going to refer us to the C A B for their review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And we will also refer to Dutchess County for their review. And we will authorize without prejudice to any information or comment as may be presented in public hearing or may arise based on both above cited field visit and referral preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for consideration on October 5th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Edna.
Very good. All in favor?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care. Okay, our next one is Nicole, Mattel, 12468 Corporation, Site Plan Review, Pool, Pool House and Garage. Do we have someone here representing?
Yes. Yes, good, good evening. This is Kyle from New Dimension Construction, representing Nick and Preetham Mattel. A little camera trouble here on my end. What I was looking to start with here is just to, quick review, I see of the solar up to begin with. Obviously, we met with the, we had a pre-conference meeting, brought up a few things, so we wanted to bring to the board some of the updates that we have. And what we're working on here is, we have a site plan, we have a planting plan, we have a lighting plan. We have engaged an engineer. We do not, other than the short E A F, which was filled out and submitted, we do not have any more information at the, at this time from the engineer. There were a few things that we needed to determine, obviously stormwater runoff management plan, grading plan, and he's also going to calculate the amount of total excavation as well. Another issue was locating the septic tank, D box and laterals. So those are the things that are not, have not been done yet. One of the things that the, the board had, the pre-conference meeting, you asked for us to consider was our, our areas of coverage. So a quick calculation, quick calculation on that, our impervious, I believe, will be about 2.1%. And our total roof structures will be about 1.5% of the total area. And there was another question that was brought up regarding the accessory structure, square footage max, and we are, as calculated, 1,498. So we are right, right at the maximum level, as I understand. So anything that the board would like to discuss or any questions that you have regarding this, the plans that we've submitted, we certainly, Melissa Baker, who is the architect, is also on the call, so.
Hello.
Anything you'd like to direct at us, we'd be more than happy to answer. And obviously, prior to our public meeting, we have some more information to submit, so we look forward to your comments.
Okay, any, anyone with any comments or questions at the moment?
I do. Jim, you noted that, that the pool house might be an accessory dwelling. It has a half bath and the shower is outdoors. Does that make a difference?
Because it had heat and other elements, it appeared to me to potentially be an accessory residential structure. It doesn't necessarily change the proposal. It must come in form to us in terms of the ability to do it, but it doesn't, either admittedly. It just seems like it could potentially be used as, you know, kind of considered like a detached bedroom of sorts, for lack of a better term. And the thinking was just, you know, to have the conversation of whether or not it seemed like it might be considered an accessory residential structure, or maybe ask the applicant what the, you know, the intent is for the use of that. Admittedly, it's not, it would not be considered a full, you know, accessory residential structure because it is lacking some of those amenities.
It seems to be, if anything, a guest cottage.
Yeah, but that's what I'm thinking exactly, it'd be more of a guest cottage.
Yeah, the, the intent is not to use it that way. The intent is really to use it as a pool house and, you know, maybe have a couple pieces of workout equipment or something like that in the pool house. But the owner does not intend to use it as, as a guest cottage.
One thing that caught my attention, at least on the last plan, when we were looking at floor plans for the different buildings in the pool house, was a very significant portion of it was turned into some sort of a lounge, which ordinarily one does not find in a strictly, yeah, lounge, in a pool house, which suggests with a large couch, something like that, it could very easily be a sleeping facility for guests, something like that, especially since it does have a sufficient bathroom for someone just to wash up. So that became, that's, that's just somewhat questionable of exactly why there's a lounge in a pool house.
But there's really no problem with designating it as a guest cottage and providing a special permit for a guest cottage. Is that correct?
There would not be, but it would, it would impact the septic system since it would be an additional bedroom.
And also just acknowledging that, if that was the use, that's what we're looking at, is a guest cottage.
And there's nothing wrong with that, but it does, does factor into the calculation for the size of the septic system, the leach field, that sort of, that sort of thing.
Sure. The reasoning, as I understand it here, was that we have a gym in here, and that's the reason why the structure's being heated. Otherwise, it really wouldn't be necessary to heat this space. If you look at the, I'm not sure if we have the floor, if you have, there is no good way to get to a bathroom from the pool, from the pool. So with, with three boys in the house, they, they've decided that they need, need to have a bathroom here at this pool house. So very much the idea is to keep, keep the children and their, and their guests outside of, you know, for the day, for the day use. And then the notion is, is as we've designated on that plan also, the one that was up prior, we've also designated that that would be sort of a home gym situation as well. And that's the reason why we've separated that with, with a wall. If that is an issue in terms of with, with the board having, having a separate, having a separate entrance, we could certainly modify the plan to, to reflect something that the board was more comfortable with, but the intention here is that this, this would, would not be guest accommodations. And then therefore, as was put forth before, we're not adding a bedroom, therefore adding a load. Obviously, we are connecting to the septic system, so we will be contacting, we are working with an engineer and go through those proper channels.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I just want to verify that I got the numbers right. You said that the impervious surface was 2.1% and the total roof was 1.5%?
Correct. Correct. So I calculated the impervious as 7,122 square feet. And the total roof structures, including the main house, at 4,775.
Okay. I guess it's just quite misleading, looking at the plan itself.
Yeah. Yeah, the only. Yeah, because I have.
Because, because the imperv, the impervious includes the driveway, the tennis court, or scot, excuse me, the basketball court, the garage.
The swimming pool.
Those are all impervious surfaces, right?
This will all be double checked by the engineer, so I may, I may modify that to your point. Thank you for mentioning a swimming pool. Swimming pool may not have been in my calculation, just not, not thinking of that, but.
Well, I think everything, I'm looking at it and it seems to me that everything I'm seeing that isn't green leads me to believe it's an impervious surface. And so, you know, I just, I would, I would ask that you really double check that.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And again, that will be done by the, the engineer as part of our, our next submission by the 14th.
And if it helps, the property is larger than what's shown on, on that plan that you're looking at.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure we're, we're looking at the entire property there.
No, we're not.
Then, then I would recommend that you certainly show us that. It is misleading when you throw into that and, you know, I mean, I'm looking at it and it's certainly not 1.5% or 2.1%, so.
Yes, it's 8.03 acres is the total parcel.
Okay. Very good. Well, I think we do, we do need, I think, a plan depicting the entire property so that we can get a much better idea of exactly what's going on where and exactly how big it actually is, the amount of development that's going to take place.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
Oh, sorry, there is actually a plan. I'm not sure if you have the architectural drawings there, but that actually shows the entire property, I think.
Let's see.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all.
There, there were two PDFs that were submitted, one with the landscape architect and then one with the, one from Paul Tab. There you go. Yes, that should be the top sheet there, Melissa, I believe.
Yes, yes, there's the whole property.
Okay, but once you get that verified, we'll look at the new percentages.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes, definitely.
And Kyle, this is Jim from Planning for Place. I have a few minor kind of comments about some, some just particulars on the sheets. You're going to copy my notes, you can take a look at those, just some, some notations and things on there. Right, thank you.
Anything else from the planning board? Well, I have another resolution. Somewhere. Ah ha. All right. County Brown Lake Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Nicole and. I hope I got that right. Mattel, for site plan approval under town code chapter 125, construction of a detached garage, basketball court, pool, pool house, pool fence, screened porch, patio and firepit, parking court and other associated site improvements at 473, 475 Middle Road in the R A 10 Rural Agricultural Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public, and classify the proposed action as type two under seeker. We're scheduling a public hearing for October 5th at 6:45 and directing the court to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. And we're delegating planning board members.
I'll go.
Another joy of going, who's going? Sharon?
Sharon.
Melody would like to go on a site visit?
Sure.
Sure. Melody, conduct a field visit for the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. We are going to refer to the Conservation Advisory Board for, for written comment concerning environmental factors and the waterfront advisory view for written comment and concerning consistency with the L W R P. And we are going to refer to Dutchess County Planning for their comments, written review. And we're going to authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on October 5th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay, Sharon, second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Very good. Okay, they will be getting, Sharon and Melody will be getting in touch with you for the site visit and when those other documents become available, you know, please get them to us.
Absolutely. We, we know we have a short, short window of time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one more project. Bernard Shuldorff, 132 Rhine Cliff Road, Site Plan Review for Interior and Exterior Improvements and Shed Dormers.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is Krista Hines, representing for my brother Bernard Shuldorff. So we're seeking site plan approval for the renovation of 132 Rhine Cliff Road. This property has been in the Shuldorff family for many years. My grandparents purchased it in, I believe, like 1970. And so it's, was the residence of my grandparents. And then after they passed away, my brother lived in the residence for, for quite a while, until he ended up moving back to the farm. My brother owns the dairy farm at 108 Rhine Cliff Road, so this property is adjacent to the farm. So he moved back to the farm and has been renting out 132 Rhine Cliff Road for some time, approximately 20 years or so. And it's just in desperate need of renovation. The interior is very small. It has two very small bedrooms, very small kitchen, one very small bathroom. So we have plans to increase the square footage by adding two shed dormers. Currently, the attic space is really inaccessible. There's a, there's a stairway, but it's, it's not, I don't believe it would be a legal stairway, so it's, it's been used for storage and things like that. But we'd like to be able to use the attic space and move the bedroom upstairs. So we're not looking to add any bedrooms to the residence. We're basically just looking to move them to the second floor and create more of an open floor plan on the floor, a larger kitchen, a bathroom on the first floor and just, you know, a more open floor plan. So we're looking again to do the two shed dormers, obviously a new roof, which we would contract out. But the remainder of the work, we'd be looking to mostly do ourselves, myself and my brother and other family members were in the process of being the siding and painting the existing cedar siding that's on the house and replacing all the windows and flooring and that. I think it'll be a really great improvement to the house. And again, it's really in dire need of updating and, and renovation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. No questions, I have a resolution. The Town of Ryambick Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Bernard Schuldorff and Krista Hines for site plan approval under Town Coach Chapter 125 for interior and exterior renovations at 132 Rhine Cliff Road in the RM1 Residential Minimum Density Zoning District, excuse me. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. We classify it as type 2 under seeker. We're scheduling a public hearing for October 5th at 6:50 and direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. And we're delegating planning board members.
I'll go, Sharon.
Sharon? I'll go with Sharon. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report our observations at the time of public hearing, and we are going to refer to the CAB and for review and written comment concerning environmental factors and to the WAC for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP and in accordance with Town Coach Chapter 125, we're referring the application to the WAPAC for review and written comment concerning historic and/or archaeological elements, and we also refer to Dutchess County Planning for their review and comment, and we're authorizing without prejudice to any affirmation or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on October 5th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
移了
Second.
Edna.
Second, Edna. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll be getting in touch with you about setting up the site visit.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We had, and I must admit, I don't have, let me see. Okay, well, we might as well do the ZBA referral first. It's for Mattel, two area variances required, a 43-yard side yard setback variance and an area variance to locate an accessory structure closer to the front lot line than the principal structure. And of course, we just went over that, that project. Any comments before I read the resolution? Who is that?
Not me.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, how's this sound? The Town of Ryambick Planning Board upon referral by the ZBA of an application by Mattel to undertake improvements to the property at 473 Mill Road in the RA10 Zoning District, find the requested variances, raise no significant planning or environmental concerns, and recommend that the ZPA rely upon its own study of the facts and deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Coach Chapter 125, including consideration of input of neighboring property owners. Could I hear a motion to approve?
移了
Sharon? Kathy seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. We'll send that on. Okay, we have two additional issues to address. And I guess the first one is, if I can find it here, oh, got it. The petition that we wish to send to the town board regarding definitions for different aspects of hospitality uses, and we had also been asked at the time to address the membership club accessory use contained in country and two. Since we had a number of discussions, and I was informed today by Elizabeth, our town supervisor, that she is going to send the membership club question to the zoning review committee upon the recommendation of Warren Raplansky, the town attorney. So basically, I hope, have you all had a chance to read the petition as it was sent out to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It's in two parts. 1.1 is the adoption of the definitions for bedroom, guest room, lodging unit and suite. And 2 was the elimination of the accessory use membership club from the permitted accessory uses by either eliminating it or sending it on with some to the town board with the request that they review it to develop a definition. We've now been told that we don't need to do that. So what I'm going to ask you to do is ask for a motion to approve the petition and a second, and then ask if there are any amendments to the petition. So if this is.
So we're, we're motioning and seconding that we're accepting the resolution as it was submitted to us, correct?
For review, yes, for consideration.
And then that opens it up for discussion.
Then I'm going to ask for if there are any amendments, anything like that. So if I could, a motion to accept the petition for review and consideration.
移了 Edna.
Thank you, Edna. A second?
Kathy, second.
So now, so Michael, then I would like to move to delete number two from the resolution and send that back to, I guess, understand the zoning subcommittee.
Okay.
And, and let me finish. And then that would require the renumbering of the resolution. So it's the removal of two and the renumbering of three and four to become two and three.
Correct, thank you. Could I hear a second?
Second, Kathy.
Kathy. I think, am I supposed to poll the board on amendments to resolutions?
Look, you, you need, you need, well, yeah, I would, but you've also got to do a roll call vote of resolution.
Of the resolution itself, okay. On the amendment that has just been, that Melody has put forward, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Edna?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
And I vote aye also.
So then I would like to, so then I would like to motion to accept the resolution as amended.
And, and as amended and renumbered.
Yes, correct.
Could I hear a second?
Second, Kathy.
Okay. Any further discussion or consideration? Okay, we'll poll the board. Edna?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. We will send that on. We have one other item, and that is, once again, a slight revisions were made to the use change for the ORP to allow vehicle maintenance and basically for rookies or any other car dealership to use the WR, a site on the, in the WORP zoning district for servicing of vehicles, prepping of new car vehicles, things of that sort. Since our last review of this, which I think we felt was acceptable, two changes have been made, and these are the two that I'm aware of, and please correct me if I've missed something. On all four boundaries of the, of the, of the use, it was required that a 200-foot setback from any property line be required. The revision of that is that the 200 feet only be required along public roads, that would be 9G and Middle Road, and the other two boundaries would be up 100 feet with the planning board given the discretion to lessen that if the planning board felt it was justified. The second revision has been that the garage doors for any service facility were required to be placed on the back of the building so they would not face any public road. The revision is, once again, that they shall be placed on the back of the building unless the planning board feels there is sufficient screening, obscuring of the garage doors should they be on the front of the building, such that they will not then become a visual problem. Those are the two revisions that I believe have been made to that original amendment to the zoning law. Jim, is, was there something else?
No, you, you got that one set on, you got that one.
Well, every now and then I do get one of them. Any questions or comments about this? Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve the revised Office Research Park zoning amendment?
移了 Melody.
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any comment? I will poll the board. Edna?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we will send that back to the town board. That's all I have.
One more. Michael, we have to do the HAPAC referral.
Oh, yeah.
Let me pull that up on the screen here.
Thank you.
Second. Thank you, question, she thought, she reminded me, I just remembered.
Don't know why I forgot this one.
So I pulled this together really quickly, based on the review that we had done, essentially saying that we don't believe that this needs to go to the HAPAC. I mean, really quickly, I can just explain, so, unless you're doing an emergency roof repair, Mike, I think you may know a little more than that, and the thought was at least for emergency roof repair, she should be able to go forward with doing. I don't know, Mike, if you have more information on it, you want to put out there than that.
Basically, the way they wrote the HAPAC law, any building permit for historic structure or something that would come under the historic structure law, the planning board has been asked to refer to the HAPAC, even if it doesn't entail an application to the planning board for special use permit or site plan or anything like that, which is very awkward, since if we don't have an application before, so we really don't have anything to review or study. But nonetheless, that's the way the law was written. So we've tried to sort of skirt around that with the, well, with the resolution basically that you see before us now, in hopes that we can eventually get the town board to change the law so that any referrals coming from the planning board pertain to applications that are before the planning board. Otherwise, we really don't have any basis of knowing whether a recommendation should be made or not. So I guess we, I'll just give this a quick read. The Town of Ryambick Planning Board upon referral by the zoning administrator of a building permit requiring planning board review of a building permit submitted by Susan Mitchell for interior renovations.
That's all right. That's, that's my quick type of the stuff.
Well, we'll just lose that for roof repair. Finds that the interior renovations are not a review typically under the purview of the planning board, does not have any comments on the proposed project, and recommends that emergency repair projects not be forward for consideration by the planning board, and that the draft law be amended to remove these referral requirements as such referrals create an unnecessary hurdle and delay for applicants. Could I hear a motion to approve this?
移了
Kathy, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, six aye, no, no, no. Okay, now, I think, that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything to share with the planning board tonight? Okay, hearing nothing. Could I hear a motion to adjourn?
移了
Okay, I think Melody has motioned and Kathy seconded. All in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Very good. We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Take care and stay healthy.